I appreciate you taking some time to come out and be a part of this as our congregation continues through this denominational discernment process that our session decided to get us launched on last December and we kind of unrolled in January. Just out of curiosity, how many of you were here for the February meeting? Or have had a chance to listen to it online? So, okay, so most of you have. So I'm going to do a little bit of review here in a bit, but won't spend a whole lot of time with that. But basically, what our goal is this morning is to try to do four different things. One is just to do a quick review of where we've been so far, and then I hope the bulk of the time can just be spent in dialoguing together, do a little Q and A. So be thinking even now, what questions you might have. I hope that you've had a chance to kind of sit with some of the information that was shared, to talk with others, maybe you've talked with a spouse or people in your small group, or there just was something that was said last February, or something you have read that kind of sparked a question, or something that you're just concerned about, by all means, I want to give you an opportunity to share that. And then at the end of the time, I want to give a question to you to wrestle with as we go through this process, and then I've got a couple homework assignments for each of us, sort of the, what are our next steps? What are we going to do together? To get started though, before I pray, I'd like to just do a quick pulse check, so to speak, on this, because I recognize the issues around our denomination kind of hit us all in different places. For some of us, we kind of stir up a pretty strong emotional reaction. We have very strong feelings, strong opinions about this. For others of us, this, we're just kind of confused. We don't really know what's going on, and we're just here this morning trying to figure things out. So let me ask you to do this with me. On a scale of one to, how about just one to five? If one is, and this doesn't raise my pulse at all, I'm really not sure what the big deal is, I'm just kind of here to figure it out. And a five is, this whole stuff really gets me kind of worked up. I've got strong opinions, I'm feeling a sense of anxiety, whether it's around the issues, or whether it's around what this could do to our congregation as we work our way through this. So one would be not too much, I mean, not registering, you know, kind of work your way up, a two, three, four, five. Can you find kind of where you'd be on that scale of one to five in terms of a pulse check on this whole thing? I'm going to hopefully make you not feel too awkward here. Can we just kind of walk through? How many of you are ones on this? So not only ones, how many twos? Couple of twos, how many are threes? Fours? And fives? Okay, that's helpful for me, just to know where we're at on all of this. So thank you for that. Let me pray for us, and then we're going to jump into some things. Gracious God, you know our hearts, you know those things about all of this that do provide a level of anxiety for us, or a level of concern. You also know those places where we're still trying to wrestle through some questions to get things figured out. And so I pray that now your Spirit would meet us in these moments in this room. On this day in which your church is celebrating Pentecost Sunday, and the unleashing and the giving of your Spirit in a fresh and world-changing way, may we also experience your Spirit's work this morning. For we recognize that your Spirit of truth is the one who guides us and reveals your will and your ways to us. We recognize too, that your Spirit is the Comforter that can grant us that peace that surpasses understanding, even in the midst of uncertainty. And your Spirit is the one too, who can empower us for service, which is truly what we long to do, is to join you in the work of your kingdom, as it advances in our community and in places around the world that you've called us to. So now I ask for your will to be done, as we talk, as we share this morning. Grant us the gift of unity and of your grace. For these things I pray, in the strong name of Christ Jesus, the head of the church. Amen. Well, let me, if I can, just take a couple moments to walk through a little bit of where we have been so far. If you were with us at the February 10th meeting, if you've read some of the materials, you know that we've kind of laid this out as a bit of a four-step process that we're doing together. And this really is something that we're doing just internally, although we are doing it with the full awareness of our Presbyterian. Those of you who have had connections with other Presbyterian churches might hear about discernment processes that are going on. I just had an opportunity last night to go down to the retirement party of the pastor that I worked with in Tacoma for years, and their church has gone through a discernment process, but it was one that was very much driven by the Presbyterian. So just as a reminder, we have been really in a, put in a gracious position, that we get to kind of walk ourselves through this in consultation with others, but we've been able to kind of do this in-house. And here's the steps that we've decided we're going to walk through. We've beginning with information, which has really been the stage that we've been in. We're starting to transition out of that now, but would encourage you to make sure that you are getting all the information that you need. This is our chance to learn what's really happening. Some of you have heard me say already, that I want you to have an opinion, I just want it to be an informed opinion. And so make sure you take advantage of the resources we're putting on the website. Second, moving into a period of deliberation, and that's what we're moving into now, a chance for us to talk with each other, but most importantly, to listen, to listen to one another. But as we listen to one another, most importantly, to be listening to the voice of Jesus, the head of the church, and how he may speak to us through one another. And then moving into a time of intercession, this deliberation period will roughly last kind of through June and July. As we get into August and September, our emphasis will shift more towards times of praying together, praying with and for one another as a church, praying for our Presbyterian, praying for the denomination, praying for God's leading through this. And then as we move towards the end of the year, Lord willing, we'll be at a place of trying to make a decision on what our next steps will be. And this is a suggested timeline, if you will. We want to be really open, and that if it feels like it needs to take longer, we're just not there yet, we'll do that. If God is really moving, and we're ready to make a decision earlier than that, we can do that too. Why are we doing this? Well, we've said that we're going to go through this discernment process for this reason, in order to discern where God is leading our congregation with regard to our denominational home. And I want to keep coming back to that question, because it's going to be pretty natural for some of us to ask, well, what do I want? Or what do I think that the church should do? But our focus really needs to be on, what is Christ Jesus, the Lord of the church, will for us? And the truth is, we could come up with different answers to that. I could come down and say, well, I really want us to do this, but as I've listened, I really believe that Jesus is asking us to do that. And so we need to have that kind of sense as we go about all of this. Also, how are we going to do it? We've said that we want to uphold some core values as we go through this, the value of openness. Again, we have no foregone conclusions with this. Instead, we want to be very open to where God's Spirit may lead us. We want to have a sense of transparency about this. There are not going to be secret meetings. Instead, we're going to let others know what's going on at all stages, whether that's communicating with one another here, or with the Presbyterian outside, because that transparency helps to build trust. Third, humility. None of us has a corner on the truth, so we all need to be eager to learn from others. We need to be able to hear how God is speaking through others. And then last, we really want to value grace. I think it would be foolish for us to think that we're going to get to the very end of this process and have 100% agreement, everybody's going to be on exactly the same page, singing off the same songbook. The reality is, that's probably not going to happen. And that can be okay, as long as we agree to disagree agreeably. Does that make sense? There's no need for us to end up making this very personal and contentious. We can disagree, but do so with grace. I'm going to say something that you've probably heard me say before, and I will say it again and again, that the hallmark of Christian community is not the absence of conflict, but it is the handling of conflict with grace. That is what will set us apart. So we really want to hold this value up as we go through things. And that means that all of us have to live into it, every single one of us. All right, very quickly, just to review some of what we talked about last February, so we're all up on the same page, just to remind you, since most all of you were there. What are the challenges that we're facing in the denomination? What are kind of the crises the PCUSA is hitting, the underlying issues? I tend to group them into two areas, our theology issues and our polity issues. In terms of the theology, we're wrestling with what do we believe as a church? Again, here you can split that into two subcategories, big words of orthodoxy and orthopraxy. Orthodoxy, what are right beliefs? So we're wrestling with questions around Jesus and salvation, the Trinity, the essentials of our faith. And orthopraxy, what are our right practices? And that deals with issues of sexual ethics, issues around social policy. But there are also some polity issues as well, and the questions about how do we do ministry together? And that kind of can split into two different categories, just the flow of ministry. There are folks who have felt like things have moved inappropriately, either one way or another, whether things are determined too much by denominational HQ, if you will, in Louisville, too much influence that way, and not enough congregational input, and some perhaps the other direction. And so questions around who gets to call the shots, what happens with our mission dollars come up in this area. And then also, issues around the force of accountability. I shared last February about numerous places where it seems as though those in leadership are taking actions and taking positions that are far outside what is stated within our Constitution, and yet the church does not seem to have any sort of accountability for those that do so. And so that's another issue that has many people concerned. If you want to get more information about all of this, again, I'm going to point you back to our website. If you go on, click under the resources, a little link that's there, go down to denominational discernment, there's a whole separate page that Barbara has set up that's got probably six, eight, 10 links now to different things, including a YouTube version of what we did in February, all the printed materials and things are there, a list of other links that you can go to websites across the spectrum from left to right, as far as theological and political ideologies. And so again, we want to make sure you've got an opportunity to get that. So just go back to our website, check that out if you need to. But we ended last time talking about kind of this house analogy, and I set it up to say, our house is being remodeled, the home in which our denominational home is being changed. There's nothing that we can do about that. In fact, across the spectrum, everybody agrees, changes do need to be made. We're just struggling with what are the appropriate changes? And we need to kind of be thinking about, how do we gauge those changes? How significant are they? What's happening with that? But the house is being remodeled, so we need to decide, as the denomination is changing, how do we respond? What are our options with all of this? One option, we have already taken off the table. The session, the elders of the church have said, one thing we are not going to do is simply ignore what's going on around us, and just focus on ourselves. It would be easy to do that, it'd be very easy to function like a congregationalist rather than a Presbyterian church, and just, can't we just focus on Calvin? Love ourselves here, do what we feel like we're called to do, and forget what's going on out there. We just can't do that. We cannot take a position of abdication of our responsibility and of our connections to others. And so the session has said, we're going to take that one off the table. But we do have a couple other options that we need to explore. One would be just a reaffirmation, to be able to say, we're going to stay here within the Presbyterian Church USA, this will be our denominational home, we want to reaffirm that, and we want to continue to be an active, and even a proactive, part of this remodeling process and what's going on. To be involved actively in the work of our Presbyterian, and as appropriate, our synod and general assembly levels. We want to be a force of health and of growth, and be involved that way. So one could be a reaffirmation of things. A second option would be similar, and that's to stay in this home, but then to be proactive in joining with others who are of like mind, and of similar perspective on things. And so there are different affinity groups that we could choose to be a part of. One would be the Fellowship of Presbyterians, another is Presbyterian Global Fellowship. And a chance to say, yes, we are part of the PCUSA, but we've also differentiated ourselves a little bit in saying, we have joined with this particular group, this stream within the larger denomination, who are like-minded and are pursuing the renovation of our denominational house in very specific ways. So that would be a second option. And then a third, and I'm realizing that I should have messed with my fonts a little bit more, and embedded them, because that's not working too well. That third word says separation. We have to fix that for the next time around. Separation. And that basically means, we pack up our things and we move out, and we seek to have a different denominational home. And so here's why I want to kind of just segue to some of what came out of that February meeting. My thanks to those of you who filled out the feedback forms that we had available, many of you did that, we've collected those. The elders have all had a chance to read through that, because we did want to hear from you. There were a couple questions that showed up repeatedly. If you remember, that had three sections, you know, something I've learned today, a question I still have, one thing I want the session to really know. And in that middle section about questions, there were a few that came up repeatedly. One was a pretty obvious one, and that is, you know, if we leave our home in the PCUSA, what house would we be moving into? Where do we go? There is a certain limitation that will be put on us in terms of how the Presbyterian would work with us on that, and that is, we do need to be dismissed to another reformed body. We can't just go off and be independent. The point is that, in the same way that if you were to leave Calvin and move to Indiana or Pennsylvania and join a Presbyterian church there, even a different Presbyterian denomination, we could transfer your membership that way. There's a sense, the analogy holds, that we would want to take our membership collectively as a church, and move from PCUSA, and transfer that, be dismissed, and received into another reformed body. There are two that are primary, and then two others that people are going to. The two that most folks are heading to are first, the Evangelical Presbyterian Church, what's called the EPC. The EPC is a denomination that began in the early 1980s, is, there are several EPC churches around the Puget Sound area, and this has been one choice that several congregations are looking towards. Some of the differences would include the fact that the EPC is a little narrower theologically. I'm a little hesitant to use that word, because sometimes narrow has kind of a negative connotation, like being narrow-minded. If you can dismiss that for a second, I simply mean that within the PCUSA, we have a breadth of confessional documents that we use to kind of lay out what our theology is. The EPC just has one, it's the Westminster Standards, that came out of England in the 1640s. So that's a little bit narrower theological foundation. Probably another significant difference that people look at is their view of the role of ordination of women. Within the PCUSA, women are ordained to deacon, elder, a ruling elder, or teaching elder, what used to be called minister of word and sacrament. That's open and encouraged, and in fact, expected that there will be an openness to both men and women being ordained to those positions. In the EPC, that's kind of a local option, that each church and then each Presbyterian kind of decides for themselves how they want to handle that issue. They've determined that it's not an essential, so they want to allow a breadth of opinions that way. The Covenant Order of Evangelical Presbyterians, also referred to as ECO, is the denomination that was just launched a little over a year ago, kind of a split off, if you will, from the PCUSA. It's the one that has a connection to this organization, the Fellowship of Presbyterians. They're kind of twin sisters. The Fellowship exists within the PCUSA, ECO is for those that have felt the need to move out, but they really are under one big umbrella. They have the same book of confessions that we do, but a strong emphasis on starting new churches, seeking to be missionally engaged in the community and the world, and some other things there to kind of differentiate who they are. The two other options that just a few churches are going to, not many, most that are leaving or heading this direction, would be the Presbyterian Church of America, which again is a more conservative denomination, more narrow with a Westminster-only focus. And then also the Evangelical Covenant Church, I've seen one or two churches that have headed that direction, including one here in the Puget Sound has done that, so.
Cumberland?
I've not seen anybody go Cumberland, or Orthodox, or any of the other streams. It's possible. I haven't like kept up, I mean, because there's dozens and dozens of churches that are leaving all the time. So, but the two that most are going to are EPC and ECO, are the top two by far, so. Questions on that, before I move on, let me just check in on that. That's a lot of information, it may not be totally clear. By all means, do what Kathy did, if you want to, anytime this morning, throw your hand up, and we're going to actually get your questions here in just a second. The other one that came off of the sheets quite a bit, the feedback sheets that you gave us, were what happens to the property if the congregation does decide to leave, if we decide to go somewhere? According to our Constitution, the way it reads right now, all property is held by or for a congregation. It's held in trust for the use and benefit of the Presbyterian Church USA. That means that our, we don't actually own the property, we don't, this isn't ours. We use it, we have been entrusted with the facilities that we have, to be used for the good of the greater church, the larger church. And that's the case with every congregation. And that means that the Presbyterian actually gives some oversight to how this property gets used. For example, if we were just to decide to take out a loan, a lien against the property in order to do some expansion, the Presbyterian has to approve that. If we're going to buy new property, if we're going to sell property, the Presbyterian has to approve those kinds of actions. They give oversight that way, just as part of the normal life of congregation, so buying, selling, leasing, the Presbyterian's involved with. In times of division, whether it is a split in the congregation, or a congregation wishing to split from the denomination, there again, the Presbyterian has authority. And here's part of how it reads. It says, "The relationship of the Presbyterian, or relationship to the Presbyterian Church USA of a congregation can be severed only by constitutional action on the part of the Presbyterian." In other words, Calvin can't just say, ah, we're done, we're going to take our marbles and go somewhere else. We can't just leave. "If there is a schism within the membership of a congregation, and the Presbyterian is unable to effect reconciliation, or a division into separate congregations within the Presbyterian church," in other words, if all of us are unified in saying, we're going to go, or they can't seem to put us, you know, the dissatisfied folks into a different PCUSA church, "then the Presbyterian shall determine if one of the factions is entitled to the property, because it is identified by the Presbyterian as the true church within the Presbyterian Church USA. This determination does not depend upon which faction received the majority vote within the congregation at the time of the schism." In other words, in some churches, and this is actually happening, there could be a vote of the congregation, where you have 60 or 70% of the church, maybe even 80%, says, we want to leave, and we want to take our property with us. But you've got maybe 10, 20, 30% of the people who say, we want to stay. The Presbyterian can come in, and this has happened in places around the country, and say, the property stays with the minority, because they are the true church, and the others need to go and find a different way. So that's one scenario that's played out. Often what you're seeing though, is Presbyterian's enacting what is referred to commonly as a gracious dismissal process, in which the Presbyterian essentially negotiates, and says, here's what a reasonable amount of money would be for you to pay back, to pay to the Presbyterian for the property, and then we'll let you go. I won't get into all the details of that, that has become more contentious lately because of some rulings of the General Assembly Permanent Judicial Commission. Our church courts have kind of put some rulings on that, so that is getting tougher to do all the time, but that is the way most Presbyterians have operated. In fact, our Presbyterian did that about four years ago, finalized with the Squim Church. The Squim Church actually left and went to the EPC, and that's the way it was played out. So in practice, again, a gracious dismissal policy's there. Third question that came up often on, whoops, I didn't apologize, didn't give you the last part of that, on the feedback forums was, what happens to our pastors? There are four of us who are on staff, who are ordained within the PCUSA, Kimberly, Malad, and Ray, and myself. So the four of us are all ordained within the denomination. So this would affect, this will have an impact obviously on us, and the truth is, each one of us needs to be kind of running a parallel course to what the congregation is doing, and making our own determination about whether this is the denominational home that we want to stay in. And really, we've got the same options of reaffirmation, differentiation, or separation. The one difference would be around my position, simply because as your pastor, I am, have been called by the congregation, voted in, and installed, and so that provides a little bit of a different scenario for me. Any question about my leaving has to be worked out with the Presbyterian. So it could play out in a variety of different ways, that the congregation decides, we want to stay and continue in, with options one or two here in the PCUSA, and Neil could decide, I'm not going to do that, I need to go elsewhere. And at that point, would probably be a parting of ways. Or it could go the other way, the church could say, we're going to, we're going to leave, we can't stay here anymore, we need to move to a different denominational home. And Neil could decide, he's going to stay. But there, we might be able to negotiate some things with the Presbyterian that I could do what's called laboring outside the bounds, and stay with the congregation, even though I would still be a PCUSA minister, but could stay with Calvin. Or we could all go together, or all stay together. Are we confused yet?
Yes.
This is fun, huh? So, say again, John?
Dance card?
By dance card? Yeah. So it's, yeah. So, and all that, I know that I'm praying for the congregation, for you all as the members as we go through this process, and certainly I would appreciate your prayers for me, and for Kimberly, and for Ray, and for Malad as well, as we've got to kind of wrestle with some very big decisions that impact our sense of call, and, you know, to be quite frank, our livelihood, and all that goes with that. So, so those are the questions that were kind of the big three that came out of the feedback form. Now it's your turn. This is meant to be a little more of a town hall meeting, and I feel like I'm already talking too much and not letting you talk enough. So I want to make sure that you have a chance to ask questions that have come up for you. So if you've got some, if you could kind of just stand up where you're at, and I'm going to have, Jim was kind enough to offer to be my roving microphone guy. We're recorded today, because apparently our wireless microphone died, a sad death, and so, looks like we've got Katie in the back for the first one.
I can shout.
Yeah, but we're, we're recording this.
If my understanding is correct, if we were to choose as a body to leave PCUSA, then perhaps we would have the option to purchase this property. Would the organization that we go into have funds to subsidize that?
Did you all hear, understand the question, that if we leave, would the receiving organization have funds to subsidize that? I suppose anything's possible, but I have not heard of that happening anywhere at this point. That would be kind of a creative way to go about things, to see if ECO or EPC could help with that. But, yeah, I've not heard of that happening. Most of the time, things are arranged in payment plans, it's not like you've got to give the Presbyterian one big lump sum. So when, for example, the Squim Church left, that was a period of, I think, three or five years that they've been making payments to the Presbyterian for their property. So, good question though. If I hear anything more about that, I'll let you know. So, anybody else? What other questions do you have about process, about what's happening within our congregation around this, what's happening out in the denomination? What's stern? So, to Lisa.
So, General Assembly, I mean, this is all kind of happening because there's a lot of things happening at General Assembly that people don't really agree with, they're changing bylaws and things like that. I mean, this, is there not enough of an outcry from other fairly conservative congregations around the country that they're not fighting to take back, you know, and, you know, the roller coaster that General Assembly seems to be doing? Is there not this group that's just like banding together to fight back and say, you can't do this to this religion? You can't, you can't, you know, overrun, you know, and just, you know, jam down our throats, what they're, you know, people are, it sounds like, you know, there's some radical groups out there that are, that are overrunning General Assembly.
Yeah. Let me hit two parts of what you've said, Lisa, thank you for that. The first is just the thought of, is this happening because of what's going on in General Assembly? Yes, and. It's happening, the divisions, because of what's happening in General Assembly, but also what's happening in different Presbyteries. There are folks who are very frustrated, upset, very much in disagreement, what's happening on the General Assembly level, and people who are also living in very contentious, unsupportive, divisive, sometimes hostile relations within their own Presbyterian. We again are very blessed in that we may have issues, some of us, with what's going on at the General Assembly level, but I think we have been very blessed to be in a Presbyterian that overall is healthy, and we have received a lot of support and encouragement from our Presbyterian. So keep in mind that people elsewhere are struggling with this on two levels, whereas within our congregation, for the most part, it's just on one. Now, the second part of what you said, are there folks banding together? Absolutely. That's been happening for decades. There have been a number of different groups that have been doing that. Cecile and I were just, she was chairing about the group called Presbyterians for Renewal, has been one from the evangelical conservative side, if you will, that has worked for decades passionately, on levels of congregational resourcing up through the General Assembly to try to deal with some issues. The Presbyterian Coalition, the New Wine Skins Movement, I mean, I could go on and on, there are a bunch that have been out there. But in the end, I think we have reached a stage over the last year or two, where those who have been actively involved in that political process are, well, to kind of, to borrow a phrase from my father-in-law, it feels like you're beating your head against a wall, and it only feels good when you stop. And I think a lot- And I think a lot of folks are just burned out and tired, and have kind of given up and said, "We're done," which is partly why you're seeing, over the last year or so, an increased, I won't quite use the word mass exodus, but an increase dramatically in the number of churches that are seeking to move to EPC or ECO, because folks are just tired. They've been trying that approach to kind of rally the troops, if you will, for, really, for decades.
Does PCUSA have no problem with the fact that they're seeing, going from, you know, 1,000 congregations down to, what are they now, at 490-something? And, I mean, you know, that would worry me, you know, if I were the head of, you know, a corporation to start seeing all my customers leaving.
Sure. And part of that is needing to remember when we say, "Is the PCUSA worried about it?" We need to remember, we are the PCUSA, and that's part of being Presbyterian. We don't, we've got some denominational offices, and there is a bit of a hierarchy there. But we're not a top-down organization where the corporate CEO and the board of directors are in charge, and they're gonna kind of panic over things. We are just, our government works with a more centralized distribution of power. But yes, there's, I think, a widespread concern. There is, I keep hearing from folks who make trips back to Louisville to the giant office building that we have, and people come back and say, "It's like a ghost town. It's just incredible." The staff layoffs, I mean, there's a whole floor of just empty cubicles where once there was, you know, a lot of staff people that were there. So certainly, everybody is seeing it. I think there, depending on your perspective, perhaps where you lie on the theological spectrum, people have different diagnoses of what the problem is. But yeah, there are folks who, I think, are realizing that the...
We're imploding.
Yeah. There seems to be a sense, some folks have that sense, the yes. Others, again, the strength of opinion about that, that varies. So, let's go back to John, and as you're taking the mic back there. Let me just remind you, too, that, kind of back to Lisa's point about, are there groups that are working to kind of stop some of the changes that are happening? Absolutely. You gotta keep in mind, there's just as many groups that are working to make the changes. And again, if you go to the website, our website, and one of the links there will get you to a resource list, and you can see some websites. You can start poking around, and you can see probably half a dozen from each side of the ideological spectrum that are there. So you can kind of get a feel for who's out there and what's going on if you're interested in that. So, John, please.
Is one of those issues homosexuality? I haven't studied the website or anything. But is that one of the issues?
Yeah, certainly, one of the issues revolves around sexual ethics. We have had long and loud fights over the last couple decades about the appropriateness of same-sex behaviors in general. And then, more specifically, it's really focused in on, and forgive me for kind of using this phrase, but it's kind of the language that came out of our church courts, was a self-avowed practicing homosexual. So somebody who identified themselves as gay or lesbian and was actively involved in a same-sex relationship with somebody else. Could that person be ordained and installed as a deacon, as a ruling elder, or a teaching elder? Could they serve as a pastor? So that's been the fight over the decades. And a couple of years ago, the restrictions were loosened in order to allow that to happen, so that's happening now. So that's one of the issues. But again, if you go back and look at the materials that we presented in February, that is one among many issues. But it's probably the one that gets the most attention, by all means. So, yeah. So, we get, getting them back to John, and then we'll go over to Dorothy.
Is there on the website, or can you put on the website, a concise summary of the issues that are really the dividing point? We've heard in general that the issues, and I'm sure we could look them up, but I'm talking about a concise bullet point thing.
No. And the reason for that is, I guess I want to make sure things get the appropriate nuancing. My fear has been that too much of our conversations around some of these very important issues in the church have reflected the way things have happened in the culture. They've been whittled down so concise that they're just soundbites that really tend to mischaracterize the opinion and the person on the other side. There is, the handout is posted that I used from last February, from the meeting back in February. And so that'll actually have kind of a bullet point list. But again, I'd just encourage you to watch the one-hour presentation and get some of the, put the meat on the bones with that. Because there really are, again, as I did the slide earlier, there's issues around theology. There's issues around our polity together. Who is Jesus? What is the Trinity? As well as the questions on homosexuality. How are we involved in engaging Israel and Palestine? I mean, there's a lot that's out there. Issues around abortion, lots of things, so. John, and then we'll go over to Dorothy.
There's obviously a lot of focus on some of the orthodox questions. On the polity side, over the years, it seems like the Louisville arm, the, um, the people that speak for the denomination haven't been in sync with the congregations as well, regardless of what the denomination officially says at the General Assembly. And that's very concerning from a, whether it's a World Council of Churches statements that PCUSA will, you know, co-sign or author. Is there efforts to figure out how to manage that as well as kind of the General Assembly level of, "Let's get our, you know, documents in order"?
Repeat, just, John, the last part of your question, because there's a lot there, and I want to make sure I hit your question and don't answer something you're not asking.
So, from a lobbying perspective, the PCUSA will lobby for positions that are not called out by General Assembly, and yet are, I think, in most respects, not aligned with what I'm feeling. And yet, that's the position of the PCUSA in the public policy arena. And is there any ability to rein that in? We've talked about the congregation in relationship to session, you know, the local church. But the relationship of the local church to the, you know, the world community, it seems to be completely broken and driven by some faction that I don't understand.
Okay. First, an affirmation that you are correct that, because you can look at what's called the Presbyterian panel, which is sort of our in-house version of like a Gallup poll, if you will, that on any issue that seems to be somewhat divisive, whether it's issues of public policy, or sexual ethics, or whatever it is, the farther you move from the pew toward denominational HQ, the more you move from the right to the left on the theological and ideological spectrum. So, the average Presbyterian church member is far more conservative theologically and ideologically than what's referred to as specialized clergy, those who are ordained to, as teaching elders, but don't serve local congregations. They're not connected to a local church. They're serving typically in denominational positions. So, things move that direction as you go from the pew to HQ. That kind of rhymed, that was good. So back to your question, are there efforts to address some of that, or to rein some of that in? I think that goes back a little bit to Lisa's point earlier about some of the different, for lack of a better phrase, lobbying groups, groups like Presbyterians for Renewal or Presbyterian Coalition, those who come out of an evangelical theological perspective, who are having issues with what they feel like is too much of a leftward leaning politically, that's not so even a theological thing, but more just liberal politics. Our Washington office is certainly a big part of that. Have tried various ways to respond to that, whether it be letter-writing campaigns. People have tried to protest by withholding per capita payments. People have also tried very actively, and I hate having to use this kind of language, but to get our people, if you will, into those positions of leadership. And that certainly has happened, that you've seen more who would identify themselves as being evangelical in their theology rather than being progressive, getting into those places. In fact, when Kristi and I went to a meeting of the Fellowship of Presbyterians a while back, there was a gentleman that was there that I had met a few years back, who is now serving in the Presbyterian Church's Mission Office, the Mission Council. And, you know, his comment to this roomful of pastors and leaders who are contemplating leaving the denomination was, "Hey, look, you guys prayed me in here. Don't leave me now." Because he's feeling like, you know, he was the one who was willing to step forward and move into that role, and now all of those that had kind of encouraged him and prayed so long that our people would get into that position is now feeling a bit of abandonment. So, I don't know if that really answers your question, John. I think the answer is yes, there have been attempts. But again, there's a tug-of-war that's kind of going back and forth with, you know, a progressive versus evangelical theology and worldview. And at some point, too, maybe later, we can unpack why some of that plays out that way, if that's helpful. But let me make sure Dorothy gets a chance here.
Well, I guess my question kind of echoes that same thing, and it would be to the theology. And I liked your analogy in February of the house analogy, and I love the foundation. What are the foundational questions that we really need to be living by? And what's the fluff that's up there that is extant-branious, really? I mean, it's more habit, or culture-driven, or what? So, and how do we find that difference in walk like Jesus wants us to walk?
Yeah. I appreciate that. And I want to encourage you to keep kind of filtering the different pieces of information you get, kind of, and whatever works. If that house analogy works for you, great. If there's another way. But to remember, we need to weight things differently. And I'm not sure if this will totally get where you're at, Dorothy, but maybe I can offer this. In the next 12 months, the denomination will once again be wrestling with the question around same-sex marriage, that obviously is huge right now on the secular stage in terms of just different states and how state governments are responding to that. So the denomination's gonna be wrestling with that mightily. As information comes in, I would encourage you to weight that. If you hear a news report about Minister so-and-so who, in some state, has performed a wedding for a gay couple in what is currently determined to be a violation of our Presbyterian Church constitution, that may be a significant thing. But would you hold that and weigh that perhaps a little bit differently than you would weigh the actions that may come from a General Assembly that is trying to redefine marriage in our Book of Order? Or is, or is not trying to redefine it in our theology statements, in our Book of Confessions, which is right now describes marriage as being between one man and one woman? And so you've kind of got different levels of things. If somebody goes off and does one action, do we weigh that the same as the entire church changing our confessional standards around things? I would argue that we weigh those a little bit differently. So I'd encourage you to kind of filter some of the information that's gonna come around that issue, just as an example. Does that help get to kind of your point, Dorothy?
Yeah, sort of. I just think, you know, making that differentiation between... I can remember a long time ago, I taught for a while in a Catholic church, and I, when we had a beginning like little meeting, she talked about what the principal, who was a nun, talked about what was important, and differentiated that between fish on Friday, which is just something you do because, and people say, "Well, you have to," and blah, blah, blah. But that doesn't make it as important as the foundational things. And that's kind of stuck on me, and that's kind of what that analogy said to me, was there are these foundational things which really matter, and how we need to walk. And then there's the things that the world teaches us, or whatever. And definitely, our world changes. So anyway, those are things I wrestle with.
And I appreciate that you're wrestling with that. And part of the challenge, too, is we can perhaps all agree on foundational things, the centrality of Jesus Christ, for example. But as you kind of move up, we start to weight things different. And that'll particularly happen around the issues of same-sex marriage. For some of us, we're sort of a, "Yeah, whatever. Live and let live." For some, it's a passionate justice issue. This is a huge wrong. We have been unjust, and we need to right that wrong and grant same-sex couples the same privilege, the same opportunity that others have. And then others will wait that and say, "No, wait a minute, that is a huge violation of Scripture. We're gonna come down in different places on that." So we gotta wrestle with that.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, just like very specifically and practically speaking, what the difference would be between staying in the PCUSA and affiliating with, like the Fellowship of Presbyterians, versus leaving and becoming part of that ECO denomination? So I'm confused about what's different about those two options.
The, well, at the base level, it's identifying your denominational home. How that plays out, you're gonna have a different set of relationships. If Calvin stays PCUSA, we remain a part of the Presbyterian of North Puget Sound. So, we would continue to participate in the broader life of that Presbyterian. We receive some funding from them. We send our people to participate in the larger ministry and support what other churches are doing. That's kind of our larger collective life. Whereas if we left and went to ECO, we would be a part of what right now is called the Presbyterian of the West, because it's just a new fledgling denomination. They have only two Presbyteries, East and West. So we'd be hanging out with churches in Colorado and Tacoma, and, you know, all over the place, just because they're still getting started. As they grow, I imagine they will split. So our relationships with partner or sister congregations, if you will, would change. There would be some practical changes just in terms of our polity, the rules, if you will, that govern our life together. They have a different polity that has some different standards for ordination, different processes that they do things in ECO versus in the PCUSA. There would be a difference in terms, a slight difference in theology, not so much in the foundation, which is gonna be the same, because they both have the same Book of Confessions. But in ECO, they have what they have described as their essential tenets. If you were with us in February, you know, one of the things that we talked about is that some have been very frustrated that the PCUSA has always said, "We're not gonna define what essential tenets are." And if you've ever been ordained as a deacon and elder, or a minister, you know that you stand before a congregation, and somebody asks you, "Do you sincerely receive and adopt the essential tenets of the Reformed faith?" And if you ever ask, "Can I see what they are?", we're gonna say, "No, we don't have a list." ECO has developed what they call an essential tenet document, that they require their ordained officers to affirm. And, see, that would be another difference. There would be probably differences that would be less concrete, but more just in terms of feel, that in an ethos, ECO is seeking at this point to be a congregational-focused denomination as opposed to a hierarchical, we're going to send resources to denominational headquarters. They really want to be focused on the local congregation. With that, too, they want to be about the work of planting a lot of new churches is a big part of their ethos. You will hear them talk about how they want to baptize more people than they bury. They don't want to be just a denomination, another denomination that's dying, but just at a slower rate. They're trying to find ways to do things differently. How well they succeed, we'll have to wait over time to see. So, those might be some of the differences. In terms of how that would actually play out in terms of day-to-day interactions of what we do here, you probably wouldn't see a whole lot of differences, just wouldn't, you know, have an impact on what we do on a Sunday morning in worship or the Bible studies we offer in small groups or our children's and youth ministry wouldn't have a significant impact that way. Does that help, Michelle? Okay. Other questions that you have? Jamie.
I probably missed something, but I'm wondering why you first do information, then listening, and then prayer? Because my experience of listening to God, I always, has always been in the context of prayer. So, I just wondered why you don't pray first and then listen?
Or maybe it's just an artificial distinction, and I'm hoping that we're praying the entire time. Yeah, yes. And thank you for raising that, and because I do hope that we are really praying. I don't mean to communicate that we don't pray earlier. I think it's just more a matter of where's the focus and the emphasis of things along the way, that we wanted to really focus on getting everybody information right now. Let's be praying, let's be listening, let's do all those things. But then likewise, as we move into the season of more of the dialogue together, let's keep praying. But I think at that point, we're not going to have meetings that are conversations this way. We're not going to have meetings where I'm presenting new information. When we get to that stage of the intercession, the point is, all we're doing is just getting together to pray. But you're right, absolutely, Jamie. We need to be praying and listening throughout a whole process of discernment. So, thank you for that clarification. That's good. So, Frank.
Neil, could you talk to the question as to our church, Calvin, having policies that would be different than the policy of whichever denomination we choose to be with?
Can you say a little bit more, Frank, in terms of, is there a specific there? I want to make sure I hit your question well.
If, I'm going back to 10A. Can we have a policy that says we're going to be different than what the denomination has as a policy?
That will always be a little bit tricky. In terms of 10A, the, for those of you who don't know, that was the amendment that passed in 2010 that changed our ordination standards and that took away what was previously referred to often as the fidelity and chastity clause that required our ordained deacons, elders, and pastors to practice fidelity in marriage or chastity in singleness, kind of the expectation in terms of our sexual ethics. That was removed, and a different statement was put in place, which kind of opens it up for those who are involved in same-sex relationships to be ordained to offices. And so, that's the current position of the church. Different churches have approached that differently. A church cannot set its own policy as far as a denominational standard. A standard is set only at the broad church level. Churches can say, this is how we interpret the standard and what we, you know, the expectations that we hold for those who are in leadership and how we intend to apply that standard. But it still has to be applied on a case-by-case basis. So, if you go back through your old newsletters and things, you'll find some material that the session released and published entitled "An Invitation to Be Exemplary", that the session said, we want to make sure we have a high standard for those who are in leadership in this congregation. Some of that was a response to the 10A thing, but that was a way of this church saying, we want to have high standards, and we want it to be about more than just sex. Our sexuality is an important part of who we are, but boy, if you're going to be a leader in the church, we expect more than you just be faithful in your sexual relationships. We expect some honesty and integrity in how you live your life. And so, we published that, and we put that out there, trying to balance grace and truth, saying, the Bible holds leaders to a higher standard than everybody else, and we need to follow suit with that. On the other hand, we do need to practice grace. And so, we've kind of framed that as an invitation to say, if you feel like God is calling you to serve in leadership in this, we invite you to live a lifestyle that is an example to others, that is exemplary this way, with grace if we fail, but nonetheless, we want to have that standard that's there. And so, that's available, and we can get that out. But back to your question, Frank, as far as can we set our own policy? Not so much. Can we talk about how we understand the policy and we intend to implement the policy? There is some latitude there. Yeah. Does that help? Did I get to it? Okay. Let me come up front here, and then we'll go back to...
I'm always very simple in my thought, and I don't understand the policies of the up above or whatever. But I always think of Jesus as being, you know, accepting of all. So, I'm not sure of where you come from on all that stuff. But He accepted everybody of where they came from. And I know you've got to have, you know, your thoughts of your high standards of, you know, your sexuality and all that stuff, but He still accepted everybody, and leadership has to be wherever you put it. You know, as you've got to be the high standard of following all that stuff. But He still accepted, you know, everybody where they were. And, you know, if you can cast the first stone on everybody that doesn't have sin, I don't know where I stand on all that stuff. But I, you know, you who don't have sin, let you be the first one to cast, you know, the one at the next or whatever. So, I don't know how we can say you are worse than the next. And when you get down to your four little basic, well, gee, aren't we going to have the same problem in choosing the next church? You know, I don't know. It just seems like, where are we going? You know, where are we going? Isn't there going to be another issue and another issue and another issue? Am I going to agree with you on the next one and the next one? You know, I disagree with you on that one, and now that one. Is that going to split us apart? You know, which issue's bigger than the next? It doesn't make sense. How many issues are we going to come up with that's going to be worse than the next one? And is the church going to fall apart next time in the next four? You know, which church are you going to pick?
Yeah. Thank you. You raise the tension that I think we need to live into, that there is... Last time I showed kind of the Presbyterian family tree. And yeah, those that split off because they didn't like what this group was doing, eventually, they split again because they found other issues that they disagreed around. It's a very real thing that happens within the church, not just the Presbyterians. I mean, that happens throughout the church, and we've got to be very careful. To separate from other believers is a significant thing, and we've got to be careful how we do that. Are we simply reorganizing? Or are we really saying, you're apostate, and you are no longer part of the church, and we cannot be connected to you? I mean, those are totally different things. The other thing that I hear you saying, and I appreciate, and I want all of us to live with, is that tension between grace and truth. Jesus, John's Gospel, Chapter 1, says that He came full of grace and truth. Absolutely, Jesus accepted everybody where they were at, and He let nobody stay there. Jesus, at that point, you are absolutely right. He said to the crowd that was ready to condemn, because they had set that woman up. I mean, she was guilty, but they had set her up, because they weren't concerned about her. They were concerned about proving a point and trying to nab Jesus. And so, that wonderful line in the Gospel of John, when he says, you know, that you who is without sin throw the first stone. Go for it. And they all dropped their stones, and they walk away because they realized their un-sinfulness. But don't forget what else he says, what he turns to the woman and says. He looks at her and says, go and sin some more. No! He says, go and sin no more. There is grace for her, because he asks her, you know, where are those who condemn you? And she says, sir, they're gone. And he says, then neither do I condemn you. There's grace. But then he also adds that word, then go and sin no more. Truth. He accepts her where she's at, but won't let her stay there. We have got to somehow, as the Christian church, continue to live into this. And it'll always be a tension that on one hand, Jesus accepts you right where you're at. You do not have to get yourself cleaned up first to come to Him. None of us do. On the other hand, He doesn't want to leave any of us where we're at either. He wants to do a wonderful Reformation project in your life, to change you into the person you are intended to be, so you have a life that flourishes, that you are holy and that you are whole. And we need to be a part of that with one another. The challenge is that we live in a culture right now in which it is so unacceptable to say anything that somebody else might be wrong or that you disagree with them, with their choices, with the way they live their life, with their values. We have gotten to a place where we tolerate everything but intolerance. And it has really shut down the ability to have honest conversations with each other. And so, we throw around accusations, we put things on bumper stickers or stupid little Facebook posts that really take very deep, profound issues, and they trivialize them to a point where we don't actually hear each other. We talk past each other. My hope for us as a congregation, as your pastor, is that we find ways to talk to each other, particularly talk to those that we might disagree with. And I hope that we can get to a place where we can continue to show each other grace and that I might disagree with you, you might disagree with me. Let's go out and grab a cup of coffee, and at the end of it, I hope that we're both better for it, rather than just splitting. So, we've got to accept, again, where we're at, but find ways to move forward. And I don't have an easy answer for you. It's a tension we're going to have to live with, but it's not going to go away. That tension will not go away. We've got to find ways to do it that are healthy. So, I don't know if that helps. I hope that kind of maybe gives a little more to think about. But thank you for voicing the tension that I think a lot of people feel, and let's live into it together. We had, who's in the back? Okay.
I wonder about the topic of our affiliation and association with the North Puget Sound Presbyterian. Our history has been very strong as we've been supportive with our group, with exception of Squim's departure. Is it appropriate now to talk about where the direction is coming from them? Or is there any? Are they waiting? Or are we hoping to stick together?
At the Presbyterian level, the last Presbyterian meeting, I'm not sure what will happen. We've got another one coming up this Wednesday. But the last one, there was an open time for people to kind of gather around different topics that they wanted to talk about. And one of them was the possibility of churches leaving, and that actually drew quite a crowd. So, there's, you know, conversations that are happening openly about that. I know that there are a couple other congregations in our Presbyterian that are wrestling with this in various ways and taking steps towards discernment processes. So, you are right, we've been very supported by the Presbyterian, and it's an open conversation right now. I think there's a sense that we like each other, even those that might come down in a different spot on the, in terms of some of the issues and progressive, evangelical, whatever. But there's still a sense we like each other and are willing to try to work together as best we can and figure this out. So, I don't know. Warren, does that help? Does that answer your question? Or is there more you want to chat about there? Yeah. So, and again, the Presbyterian does know that we're doing this. I'm in conversation with our state clerk and Presbyterian exec, as well as colleagues, because that's that transparency value that we've got. So, let's go to Polly.
So, Neil, you did a really good job of being concise on the changes for the chastity in marriage and stuff. But there's a couple other really serious issues which are with our beliefs in salvation and the Trinity. Could you kind of remind us what the Presbyterian is or the General Assembly is or is not agreeing on that or saying or has voted against or whatever, the changes on those two things that are very important to me also, besides the other issues which are rising to the top? But these are very core things.
Sure. Absolutely, and they should be. Let me start with the Trinity. And again, I'm going to be very brief here. I went into more depth on this at the February 10th meeting, so I encourage you, if you want more, any of you can go back and kind of listen to that, and then I'd be happy to unpack even more. I've got files on this stuff. The Trinity piece comes out of a paper that was presented to the General Assembly that was trying to find ways to, how do I phrase this? To refer to the three persons of the Trinity beyond just Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Are there other ways that are biblically faithful to talk of this mysterious doctrine of the Trinity? Various motivations behind that and various interpretations of the outcome. The church did not, and please hear this clearly, did not say, we don't believe in the Trinity. Did not go down that road. But the church did say, here are some different ways that we think are biblically faithful that you can talk about the doctrine of the Trinity. And there was some big disagreement over the faithfulness of those phrases and how accurate they were and their shortcomings theologically. So, that's still kind of being worked out. But that paper was not presented as a mandate that you have to do this in your worship. You have to describe the Trinity this way. If you want to still use the language, the great historic language of Father, Son, and Spirit, you're free to do so. So, it was just presented as, here's a recommendation and encouragement for churches to consider. As far as the salvation piece, it's not, people have been frustrated not so much with what our General Assembly has said, but what they have been unwilling to say. There are places where it seems as though the Assembly has backed away from being able to make a clear statement that Jesus is the singular saving Lord. The salvation comes through Christ and no one else. Some of that is motivated by a desire to live well in a pluralistic society, where there are folks of all different faiths and backgrounds and wanting to be sensitive to that. Some of that's perhaps motivated by other reasons. But for whatever reason, the Assembly has kind of backed away from that. So, in that area, it's not so much what has been said, but what corporately the larger church has seemed as they gathered in the General Assembly have been unwilling to say. So, there's kind of a short answer. Again, a lot more could be said, but I don't want to take up a whole lot of time with that since I can encourage you to go to the website. But does that give you enough, Polly, just as a reminder of what we talked about then? Okay, thanks. You know what? The window side is dominating. So, somebody over here needs to, it's got to have a question. Okay, fine. We're back over to Eric. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's Carol. And then we'll go to Eric.
I would like to know what this was going to do to your financial side as far as your retirement or your health insurance and those practical things.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, too, Carol. I appreciate you even thinking of me. Yeah, I don't know where that's going to go, because that'll depend on what happens with these parallel tracks. You know, if we all stay together and stay in PCUSA, nothing changes. If the church goes ECHO or EPC and I stay PCUSA, but the Presbyterian allows me to quote-unquote labor outside the bounds, which is basically to serve a non-PCUSA church, and I keep my membership in the Presbyterian here, I'm not sure how that would all work out. I think you would still, as a congregation, be required to pay into my pension plan and all those kinds of things. I think that's how that works. I'd have to actually explore that. And then if we all go together to EPC or ECHO, they have their own retirement plans, their own medical plans that are separate that way. So, but yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, that's part of the weight that I feel, trying to figure all this out. So, Tony, let's go back up here to Eric. Had a question, too.
Can the Presbyterian go with us, too, if we go to a different denomination?
I've had that thought. I'm not sure everybody would, because there is a diversity within our Presbyterian in terms of conservative, evangelical, progressive, liberal, however you want to use those labels. There is a diversity. So, I'm not sure everybody would want to go. I think there's folks that are very happy and want to stay with the PCUSA. But there is a possibility that there could be a whole group that breaks off together. Or, I mean, if a group of us all went EPC or all went to ECHO, we could maintain those relationships. And one of the other options that's out there, Santa Barbara Presbyterian has tried to do this, ran into some problems in the church courts and is circling back and trying to do it again, is to create what's called a union Presbyterian. Basically, it's a combination of ECHO and PCUSA, because they're kind of like us, from what I understand. As in Santa Barbara, they all like each other, and they want to stay together. But some of them are really having trouble staying with the denomination. So, they like their local connections. It's the big picture that they're struggling with. So, they came up with a creative solution of a union Presbyterian that's joint, that's yoked together of these two denominations. So, you could be a part of the Presbyterian together, but you could have a denominational affiliation of either PCUSA or ECHO that's separate and find resolution that way. I'm not sure if that'll work out, if they're actually going to be able to make that fly. Again, they tried. Some of the language got shot down in the church courts. They're trying it again. They've kind of revised some things. That might be an option for North Puget Sound. I don't know. Good question, Eric. I like it. I was thinking kind of along those lines, too, because I like the folks I work with. So, Tony, you got a question, you, too?
Yeah, I have a question, and that is, do you have any kind of a read or any kind of a feeling as to how some of the talk and the movement towards ECHO and other denominations within the Presbyterian culture is affecting or being looked upon by the culture at large? What is our witness?
I would, this is just going to be my opinion and kind of conjecture, kind of hard to speak on behalf of the whole culture. But my sense is that the broader culture either doesn't know and doesn't care, because, I mean, this isn't on the radar. It's not like, and I want to talk about this more in just a moment. And if people really don't give a rip what's going on in the church, in the broader culture, and church in general, much less the Presbyterians, they don't even know how to spell it, much less who we are and what we do. Most of you don't know how to spell it, so don't laugh. The, or I would say, they look upon it and they say, see, these people, look, they fight with each other. That's what Christians do. They just, they fight all the time. They're, you know, they're kind of a hateful bunch. They're all about dividing and creating walls and those kinds of things. And if it has any sort of impact or witness, my guess is unfortunately, it would probably be towards the negative side. I would hope that, you know, kind of what we're doing here at Calvin and what I think is happening in our Presbyterian, in other ways, if word leaks out about what we're doing, it would make more of a positive impression that, you know, we're wrestling with the big issues of the day in the culture and the big issues in our denomination, and we're trying to find ways to do it in a graceful way. And I would hope that we could actually be a model that way. Again, when we entered this process, I tried to share with you all my vision and my hope for us as a church is that we could do this so well that other congregations would look at us and say, we want to do it the way Calvin did. I mean, that's the high standard I want us to pursue with things. And if we can do that, then hopefully, those who are living apart from Christ in the broader culture will look and see, wow, they did that a little different. There's something about that. They still love each other, even though they don't agree. And so, I got Mike up here, and then maybe time for one more, because I have a couple of things I want to share before we run out of time. I want to share before we run out of time.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about the growth overall or lack thereof of Presbyterian Church USA and how it compares to some of the other denominations and the struggles they're going through? Just kind of in general, is it going up, going down, staying the same? What's the history?
We're dying. Not as fast as some and faster than others. Next question? Yeah, some of that I got into in February, so I don't know that I want to totally repeat it all here, I don't have all the statistics in front of me, but yes, we are, as a denomination, we are dwindling rapidly. The rate of decline that we have experienced over the last decades, if we continue, will be done in 30 years. There will not be anybody left. And I'll talk a little bit more about Calvin specifically, and our Church, and how that relates. I saw some statistics just this last week, and if you're really interested, I can send you a link, Mike, afterwards, that looked at the major mainline denominations, Protestant denominations, and they're all, they're all on the same basic trajectory. I mean, we're not necessarily all that much better or worse than anybody else in terms of the Methodist or the Lutherans or whatnot, so. Where there seems to be pockets of growth, it tends to be in non-denominational, independent evangelical churches. However, there is some question whether that growth is conversion growth or transfer. Are they just picking up the people who are disaffected and leaving other churches? Or are they actually seeing people coming to Christ and seeing conversion growth? And that's disputed, so, yeah. Gretchen, and then, okay, we'll get you, Michelle.
My question is related to the last one, and it seems to me that the Presbyterian Church USA is evolving, and I'm wondering what you see in the future as more conservative churches are leaving. I mean, the Presbyterian Church 10 years from now is not going to be the same it is as it is today. It's not only, it's going to be smaller because it's lost members, but in what other ways do you see changes?
Yeah. Well, certainly, I would say that at this point, there will be a theological movement of the Presbyterian Church USA toward, I hate labels, but I have to use something here, towards the left, towards a more progressive theology, towards a more liberal politics, simply because those that are on the right evangelical theology, more conservative in their politics, are leaving. And if for no other reason, you're going to see that, that who's left are the folks that lean that way. So that would mean that the whole, the center, if you will, is going to shift leftward in terms of theology and politics in the denomination. Other changes though, because there's things shrinking, you're seeing changes in, that are coming by forced cuts in terms of personnel at the denominational level. I shared at the first round of this that I hear from people who make trips back to Louisville and have done that repeatedly, that they are just shocked when they go back and they see our denominational offices where there can be just like a whole floor of empty cubicles because they've had to lay off so many employees and there's a real downsizing. Some of that is economically driven because with shrinking membership comes shrinking giving and shrinking opportunities to send monies to the denominational offices. But some of that also is being done, I believe, a little more strategically, trying to change the way we do things. There's certainly some positive signs, in my opinion, that are coming out denominationally, attempts to really publicize and to publicly start new worshiping communities, and they're actually using that language intentionally, they're not talking about church plants because that feels like it traps us into traditional models of what a church is and the way we've done it in the past. So they talk about wanting to start 1,001 new worshiping communities that could look like any sort of different thing, including even, there might be ways that our own community college ministry and the worshiping communities that are kind of starting with that, that Malat is helping us with, could even qualify for some grant money perhaps, and that's been kicked around, who knows? So there's some signs there. Is that enough? Does that kind of get what you're after, Gretchen? If I think about it some more, I might be able to come up with a couple more answers and we could talk a little bit more later. So that's, that's good, I appreciate that. Let me hit Michelle on the back, and then I'm going to run out of time before I, so I want to make sure I have time to share a couple thoughts with you all before we're finished.
Thanks, I'm still just trying to understand the practical ramifications of each of the possible outcomes.
Sure.
So I, it's clear to me, leaving the denomination, that's pretty clear, and staying within PCUSA is clear, but the, staying in PCUSA and affiliating with one of those, you know, fellowships is a little fuzzy to me still what that, what that really means. And I guess I'm wondering, is it accurate to think of that as, you know, the people that are, or the, excuse me, the congregations that are choosing to do that, they're trying to change from within, they're trying to change PCUSA from within without breaking away, but potentially down the road, if they don't see that PCUSA is going the direction that they're committed to, they would join up with ECO? Is that kind of an accurate way of thinking of it all?
I think it's an accurate reflection.
Because I was trying to understand the difference between staying in PCUSA and revamping or building or whatever it was versus affiliating with this, these fellowships. Okay.
Michelle, I think you described what is the opinion of many, that there are folks who are in the fellowship now who are often because either they're in a Presbyterian like ours that they like and don't really want to leave that, they're willing to stay, but they also want to be able to say to the world, "We have differentiated, we're gathering, this is more who we are, and so we, we will affirm these essential tenets, we will kind of go this direction with things," while still working for change within the denominational house that's PCUSA. And the opinion of many is, if there's not enough change in the PCUSA over a period of years, that many of those congregations will find themselves moving towards ECO or possibly EPC. So that's possible. The, the whole point of those affiliations really is to just, to resource together, to be with like-minded folks, to kind of the better together mentality, if you will. I think that's kind of the idea that's a part of that in terms of working for change. Cynically, some people might say, you know, "You're just trying to make yourselves feel better because you want to say you're different, but you're not willing to leave." I mean, some folks could take that approach too, so, you're welcome. All right, once again, the elders who are here, raise your hands if you would, from the current session members, current session members. So look around, these folks are going to linger for a few minutes after as best they can and not go anywhere because they want to talk to you and hear your questions as well, so by all means, pick their brains. Also, they want to set up specific times, try again, and bang, there we go, to do some listening groups, to have opportunities. I know in a big setting like this, you might have a question, but for some of us, you know, the idea of standing up with a microphone feels really intimidating, and I get that. So we want to set up times in smaller groups of six, eight, 10 people who can meet with one or two of our session members because they want to hear from you and to hear your concerns, to process your questions, or at least take your questions back and go find the answers. They may not have all of them right away, but that's okay. The point is just to continue this conversation together in different ways. On the table over there underneath the windows, we have five groups already set up that you can sign up for today as different elders are choosing days, times, and locations to meet, and you can just sign up and say, "I want to come and join and be a part of this group." We're going to get more organized as we go, but this is something we want to do over the next month or two with things, at least through June. If it needs to go into July, we'll do that too. Those of you who might be Christwood residents, we've got, I think, one, maybe two already set up up there, you can pass that around to folks. We want to make sure that we connect with people that way. So again, though, the goal is that all of us are listening to the voice of God speaking through one another as we try to live together in a spirit-filled and spirit-led community. The other part of this, you probably already know this, especially if you were in worship last week or this week, is we are going to be intentional about our Sunday series for these next weeks, talking about discernment, about hearing God's voice and following God's will. And so as you hopefully already know, we're looking at three different mini-series that are a part of this. This first part laying the foundation about God speaking to us and how that works out, why God speaks to us. Second, what has God already said in the Scriptures? So we're going to look at some of the passages, sometimes controversial ones, about some of the big issues that we are facing around marriage, around the personal work of Christ, around the authority of Scripture. And then last, we'll get into some practical stuff as we wrap this up, about how do we do this individually and how do we do it in community? But I want to take the few minutes that I've got left to share something with you that I hope will lead up to giving you a question to wrestle with, as you've given me some to answer, respond to this morning. And that kind of comes around this, that when we talked in February, we talked about the state of the denomination, and then we asked the question of, "Do we fit? Are we still a good fit?" And I want to suggest that in order to answer that question, we also need to step back and ask, "Well, who are we?" To know whether or not we fit there, we need to know who we are as a Church, and we need to know where we are in this place in history and in our community. And so I want to take just a few minutes to ask you to take a look around your community here in Shoreline and Edmonds that God has called us to live in and to worship in and to serve and do ministry in, because the world is changing right outside your doorstep and mine. One specific way to get at this, and there's lots of different ways, but is to look at the question of changes in our population just in the last 10 years, since, as we go through some census numbers. If you specifically look at changes in age and life stages in the residents in Shoreline, you'll see, first off, that it's remained pretty flat, we have not seen a big bump, it's been actually three one-hundredths of a percent change. I mean, Shoreline didn't change in terms of the population over that decade, but who's here did? From 2000 to 2010, those who are under four years of age, young children, 6% less; those under 17, 18% less; those in kind of just general adult years of 18 to 64, came up 4%; same with those over 65, increased 4.2%. In other words, Shoreline is getting older. The kids, and you're like, "Really? Shocker, huh?" The kids who were here a decade ago have grown up and moved out. Their parents, the older residents of Shoreline, are still here, which means that even if they could afford it, which many young folks cannot, they can't move in because there's no homes, because everybody is still here and getting older. And this neighborhood, by the way, it's kind of fun. You look at some zip codes and things, the median age in Snohomish County is 35, the median age in King County as a whole is 37, the median age in my zip code, if you go over towards Lake Forest Park, is 39. You know what the median age is right here in this zip code? 46. It's like a decade older than the entire Snohomish County. All right, now, some of you live in Edmonds and you're thinking, "Well, it's not that bad there, right?" Likewise, the Edmonds population basically remained flat. It increased by a half a percentage point, fairly stable, but once again, an 11% decrease in children under four, a 9% decrease in those 5 to 17, those who are in the regular adult years of 18 to 64 remained basically flat, those over 65 jumped nearly 16% increase in the point of a decade. In other words, Edmonds is also getting even older. Now what about Calvin? None of us are aging, obviously, but the people you worship with on Sunday mornings, they're getting older too. Here's an interesting stat. When Calvin Presbyterian Church began in 1956, I looked this up this morning, I pulled out the hard copy of the annual report from Calvin Presbyterian Church, 1956. I mean, you hold it delicately because the paper's old, it's all typed, I mean, because this is, I mean, they're not running it off on the computer, right? You know, printed copies, handwritten notes that are in there. 1956, Calvin Presbyterian Church, at the end of our first year of existence, we had 158 adult members. Enrolled in Sunday School, we had 326 children. This church began with twice as many kids as adults. Where are they and what happened? See, they grew up and they moved, and their parents are still here. Now, the stats don't compare exactly because of different age breakdowns and some of the differences in the years, but you'll get the picture here. Here's Calvin, a change just in five years, from 2005 to 2010. We saw a decrease in our members under 15 by 20%, and those over 65 increased by almost 12%. More than that, Calvin is also, we are getting smaller. Our membership has changed over the decade. In 2000, we had 566 members, in 2010, it was down to 489, a 13.6% decrease. Likewise, in worship attendance, we've seen a decrease from 2000 at 406 down to 297, a 27% decrease. Why? I would posit that there's perhaps a connection between our aging and our decreases in membership and attendance, and it happens on both sides of the generational spectrum. On the older side, older members simply can't come due to health or mobility or because they've passed away. And younger, while an older generation can't come, younger generations won't come. There are changes in attendance nationwide. Survey's done to talk about, indicating whether or not people seldom or never attend religious services. In 2003, a quarter of US adults said they never or seldom attended a religious service. By the time you get to 2012, that's ticked up four points on a national level, but in Washington State, that number goes to 35%. One out of three of your neighbors seldom or never attend any worship service of any kind of any religion. Now, there's also been an increase in the number of those who claim that they have no religious affiliation. They talk about this as the rise of the nuns, N-O-N-E, not N-U-N, because these are the people on, "What is your religious affiliation?" They check the box that says, "None." Okay? And so we've seen the number of Americans who identify, don't identify with a religion continue to grow at a rapid pace. 2007, it was at 15%, just simply five years later, it was up to 20%. And for those 30 years of age, that goes up to 32%. Young people do not have an interest in coming to your church. And among those who identify their religion as, quote, "Nothing in particular," 88% say they have, they're not looking. 88% of those who don't identify are not even looking for religion, they don't really care. So can you see some of the correlations? Can you see some of the challenges that we are facing? Folks, the world outside these walls is changing dramatically and rapidly. To borrow the opening lines from one of my favorite movies, The Fellowship of the Ring, "The world has changed. I feel it in the water, I feel it in the earth, I smell it in the air. Much that once was is lost, for none now live who remember it." So here is the reason I bring this up. I believe that this denominational question that we as a Church are wrestling with right now is big, but I want to suggest that it may not be the biggest question. I think we need to look where we are in the world and where we are at this point in history, and we need to ask the question about who we are and who we are going to be in the future. And then we must commit to the future we want to pursue together. What are we going to be? Because as much as it's important to know how we fit into whatever denomination it might be, we've got to know who we are to know how we fit anywhere. Leslie Newbegin was a missionary from England to India, spent his life serving on the mission fields in India. In the late, in the 60s and 70s, as he returned back to England, he was shocked by what he found in terms of the changes in Western civilization and the society in England in the 60s and 70s. And he wrestled with that, and at one point in fact said, "The mission field of the United Kingdom is a harder place to serve than the mission field of India." And he posits this, he says, sorry, "If Western societies have become post-Christian mission fields, how can traditional churches then become missionary churches?" Do you get what he's saying? Let me try to kind of start to wrap this up with an analogy that comes from a gentleman named Todd Bolssinger. Todd is a pastor at San Clemente Presbyterian Church, so a colleague within the denomination. I've had the opportunity to hear him speak at our Presbyterian, hosted him for an event, and then at a pastors' conference that Christian and I went to last month, so I've had a chance to hear him share this a couple times. He has what I believe is a wonderful analogy of where the Church is at at this point in history and the decisions that we are making and the magnitude of them. And so I hope this is helpful for you. If it is, please give Todd Bolssinger credit. If this doesn't make sense or is not helpful, blame me because I must not have done a good job. He works off of the story of Lewis and Clark. Lewis and Clark, you all know who they are, they were sent by Thomas Jefferson on their great expedition. Their job was to find a water route from what was then the known world of the American States into the land that had been part of the Louisiana Purchase. And according to Thomas Jefferson, the President himself, one goal was to find, quote, "The most direct and practicable water communication across the continent for the purposes of commerce." So they were to follow the Missouri River all the way up to its source and then find the next river that would take them to the Pacific Ocean, because waterways were the primary means of mass transport. And mass, this is the way you got goods from producers to consumers, and whoever controlled the water route would own the territory. In fact, this was so important that the Spanish government sent two war parties In fact, this was so important that the Spanish government sent two war parties to try to attack and stop Lewis and Clark and their expedition. So significant was it that they'd do this? People had been looking for this water route for 300 years. They knew the Missouri River. They also had heard about this river that emptied out of the Pacific Ocean that you know about, called the Columbia. They had just not been able to find the connection between these two, but everybody believed that there was one. There had to be this water route that could be taken from the Missouri all the way to the Pacific Ocean. It wasn't a belief that they questioned, they just figured it was a matter of time before it was discovered and then developed. And so Lewis and Clark had that as their job. And so their team of rivermen that they'd assembled to navigate these rivers, who had great expertise in that, went sailing upstream for an entire year, spent a winter with the Mandan tribe in what is now North Dakota. And the Mandan tribal leaders told them that they had to go around a huge waterfall, which is the Great Falls in Montana, they'd have to cross over some mountains and then they would find a river. And then on August 12th of 1805, they got to the source of the river, and they were overjoyed. And when you read the journals apparently of Lewis and Clark and their men, they talk about how fun it was to stand there with one foot on each side and watch the little trickling stream that would come out of the ground and that would become the great Missouri River. And then they turned around and they began what they thought was going to be just a short half-day walk maybe, of pulling their canoes up over land to walk up a ridge. And once they crested that ridge, they thought they would begin to walk down the other side and they would find the headwaters of the next river that would enable them to put their canoes in and begin to gentle float downstream all the way down to the Pacific Ocean. And when they got to the top of that ridge, Meriwether Lewis described in his journal the most horrible sight he had ever seen. The Rocky Mountains. Now, understand that they had been told that there were going to be mountains there by the Mandan leaders, but they were from the east. Mountains, they think Appalachians, they think Smoky Mountains. I mean, folks, we know about mountains, we've got cascades and Olympics, Smoky Mountains and Appalachians are foothills for us out here in the West, right? No white person had ever seen and recorded these mountains. They didn't know they were there. At that moment in time, Lewis and Clark and their party realized that everybody had been dead wrong. Their task had been to find a water route. Now what do you do? You see, if they had turned back, Boltinger argues that Thomas Jefferson and the rest of the Americas would have hailed them as heroes. They had discovered something nobody else had seen. They could have sent out the mapmakers, the cartographers, they could have begun to do all sorts of things. They would have been able to go back and talk about the discoveries, the places they'd been, the people they'd met, the new animals and species they'd seen, and everybody would have hailed them as heroes, and that would have been fine. It was the biggest discovery of the day, literally, the Rocky Mountains. They could have said this is far enough. In fact, Christie and I, some of you know, we lived in Colorado Springs, right at the edge of the Rockies, for four years that we were there. And if you drive up and down what's called the Front Range, that edge of the Rocky Mountains, the Rockies don't have foothills. I mean, it just, it's like all of a sudden, there they are. And so we lived in Colorado Springs, if you cruise around Colorado Springs, or you go up to Denver, go up to Boulder, all the time you find houses that have wagon wheels in the front yard. And the joke was that the people, the pioneers, had made their way across the plains of Kansas and endured the harsh winters, and they dealt with the native tribes that were there and all the struggles that had gone with the travel over the prairies and their things and everything, gone through from eastern Colorado, and they got there to Colorado Springs and they went, yeah, this is far enough. And they stopped, and they built their house and put the wagon wheel in the front yard, and it's still there. And you see that. Lewis and Clark could have said, we're done here. This is good. But obviously, they continued on, but they had to wrestle with a question. How do you canoe over mountains? Think about the metaphor. They were river people. Everybody had been brought on that expedition because of their expertise, they were good at rivers. But now they've discovered that their mental models are all wrong. They had assumed that everything in the West was going to be exactly the way it was back in the East. They assumed that everything in front of them was going to be just the way they had known it and what was behind them. But now they are in completely uncharted territory. Stephen Ambrose, the biographer, says that Lewis and Clark and their party knew less about the Rocky Mountains than Neil Armstrong and Edwin Aldrin knew about the moon and their lunar landing, because at least the astronauts had pictures of the moon. What do we do? What do we do as a church? What do we do as Christians, as the people of God gathered in community when the landscape around us has changed so radically? This is where the church is today. We are water people. We're made for rivers. And we have believed that everything in front of us is just like everything behind us. We have believed that everything we did to plant our churches, to get our church started, to organize our church, to grow our church, to nurture our church, we have believed that everything we've done in the past is absolutely appropriate for the future. And that means that if our inaugural year, if 1956 comes back, we Presbyterians are ready. We have the perfectly designed church for the church, for the age of the 50s. But what if it doesn't come back? What if what is in front of us is totally different than things we've, we've never seen before? And all of our old ways of thinking and being and doing church no longer fit this landscape? I'm going to contend that we need to find new ways of being church, new ways of being in community together, new ways to live out our faith together. See, Lewis and Clark had to radically reframe their entire expedition. It was no longer going to be about finding a water route. It was now about the exploration of a whole new world. Again, Leslie Newbegin. If Western societies have become post-Christian mission fields, if Western societies have become the Rocky Mountains, a whole new world, how can traditional churches then become missionary churches? So my question for you is, do you want to go over the mountains? Are you okay to just say, let's settle here? And either one's a viable option. We can choose to radically retool and reframe and find ways to canoe over the mountains, or we can say, you know what, we are content, this is who we are, and we'll stay here and we'll settle here until we die. The denominational question's big, but behind and underneath that, I think, might be an even bigger question about who we are as a church and who God's calling us to be in the future. We need to make a denominational decision, but we've got to do it based on a clarity of our own values and sense of mission and identity. To help us with this, the session is going to ask you to do something. The session would like to hear from you as part of a congregational survey that we're doing. Don't get confused too much by the name, but it's called the Transforming Church Index. As you leave this morning, there's a table in the back, kind of where John is at by the sound area, that's got a half sheet of paper that'll give you instructions. We'd ask you to do this online if you can. For some of you that are not into computers at all, we can either help you do it, we'll set up the computer that's in our library to be able to take it there, or if even that feels a little intimidating, we will make paper copies and you can go ahead and do it, because we want everybody to participate. But you'll find instructions back there about how you can get online and do that. We're going to set up a link through our website that you can get to it as well. It'll take a little bit of time to fill out, but we want to hear from you because we want to make sure that we together are listening to and through one another for God's vision for this congregation. Are we going over the mountains together? Or are we going to settle here? And the truth is, some of you may not feel like you've got the time, you've got the energy to go over the mountains, but you can still pray for and financially support and encourage and cheer on those that do, that want to go. So that's where we're headed. So again, your homework assignment for today, two things I would ask for you to do. One is to sign up for one of the session listening groups and connect with them, continue to process with them. And second, pick up one of those sheets and the instructions and fill out the TCI sometime within the next four weeks, if you would do that, please. Thank you for listening. I'm going to stick around, the elders will stick around. I'm going to pray for us right now because we've gone a little over our allotted time and make sure we have a chance to wrap up here. Let me pray for us. Oh God, you are the Lord of heaven and earth, and you are the one who has been known, who has revealed yourself from generation to generation. Thank you for the ways in which you have revealed yourself to generations of people in this church, from its beginnings in 1956 up through this present moment. You have been working in our lives, working in this place, and we rejoice in that. But now, as the world around us is changing, we look to you for continued guidance. Who are we being called to be? How do we live together? What do we do to remain faithful to you, to seek and to serve your call? That's the vision you've put before us, and we seek to be faithful to it. So I pray for each person that's here, that you would speak into our hearts and minds and lives, give us clarity where things seem confused, give us courage to voice our thoughts and opinions, and give us the grace and the ability to listen well to one another, put all of that together so that we might listen to you and follow your direction and your guidance. We are in your hands, Lord, and there's no better place to be. And so we hold tightly to you, clinging to you in faith. All these things, I pray, in the name of Jesus, the head of the church. Amen.